...de lancement des terrains communitaires d'Autawa rapport annuel 2016. And Gord McNair is there as staff, and as you know councillor Wilkinson is the chair of that committee, and I believe you have a PowerPoint presentation. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation and its board of directors, it's my pleasure to share with you the annual report for 2016. This corporation was established to take parcels of city-owned land that had developed potential and meet our objectives of providing a financial return to the city while meeting the social, environmental, and cultural needs of communities. The corporation consists of a board and staff as shown on the slide, just there, if you can read it, and joined here by Gord McNair, who is the secretary-in-chief operating officer for the corporation. As chair, I'm very proud of our accomplishments to date, and I am pleased to present the financials in the OCLDC annual report and audited financial statements to council today. So our highlights in 2016. In 2016, we had marketed five properties for sale. A significant amount of time was involved in preparing a number of projects to be ready for market, and in spite of the market conditions, we secured two agreements for 3071 Riverside Drive and 1435 Randall Avenue, which recently closed in 2017, and we're currently negotiating on 2140 baseline. The 3071 Riverside Drive property was a surplus school site acquired by the city in 2008, just frontage along Riverside Drive immediately off at Communes Bay Beach and Park. It's approximately 4.29 acres hectares. 1435 Randall was a cleaned-up former water main tower site that has been decommissioned and dismantled. The site is surrounded by Alta Vista Fire Station and single detached dwellings to the south and west of Elmwood Nonprofit Development. And 2140 baseline is a former road allowance that was originally a non-viable parcel that made viable through road closings, including removal and relocation of utilities. So we also have part of Longfield's project, a block of land that was transferred to the city's affordable housing branch, was under development this year, and the branch partnered with MultiFaith Housing Initiative and began construction of the Haven in 2015, which continued into 2016 and is anticipated to be completed in 2017. The Haven will provide 98 units and assist in meeting the city's affordable housing needs. Mr. Mayor and members of council, we're committed to promoting community improvements in the city of Ottawa that's based not only on the financial rewards, but to contribute to the social, environmental, and cultural needs of communities. Hence, we're committed on the sale of surplus property to achieving optimal value related to both financial and non-financial community values. And that's where the Haven comes into this one. This year, we have closed on two agreements and secured in 2016 and negotiated one closed later this year. We closed on 3071 Riverside Drive in March and 1435 Randall Avenue in May, with a total gross sales this year are 17.4 million. We're continuing to move forward on other properties to support the city of Ottawa. Just to let you may have mentioned that the 2016 amount of money we had intended to raise in 2016 actually didn't come in until 2017, and we just worked with the finance department so that it's taken into account as a receivable, so that the objective we've had in raising funds for the city were actually surpassing where we had intended to be at this point in time. Are there any questions? Myself or Gord McNair is happy to answer them as well.
Thank you for the presentation, the good work. With any, councillor Brockington, I believe, has a question.
Thank you, your worship, and good morning to members of council. First of all, to the OCLDC, to the board of directors, thank you for your service, and to the staff, thank you for the work that you do. Certainly, my knowledge about this corporation has increased over the last year and the last couple of years with the property on Riverside Drive, which is in River Ward, and now that the property has been sold, working with the new proponent, it certainly made members of the committee more aware of what the corporation does, and it's also highlighted some issues with the corporation that need to be addressed. That's certainly not for today, but I did have some questions. I'm just trying to find here in my booklet here, here it is, your presentation. So first of all, I don't expect answers today, but I'd like to put my questions on the record, and if I could get a reply back in the next month or so, that would be great. I've read your report in full, the annual report, and you talk about the strategic directions or your objectives as a corporation. There's about 10 of them on page four that are listed. And when I consider the property at 3071 Riverside Drive, which has gone through a very lengthy process and has in itself raised a number of questions in the community, I would like to know, you talk about maximizing financial, social, environmental, and cultural sustainability. I know that the financial component has been realized, but I'd like to know for the Riverside Drive property, how you've maximized the social, environmental, and cultural sustainability of that property. One of your other objectives is to engage in community consultation, and a major criticism of this property disposal in my ward is the lack of community consultation, particularly driven by this corporation. So I'd like to know how that objective has been addressed. And the third bullet that I'd like an answer to is, as one of your stated objectives, is, quote, "Build on community objectives." As you know, a decade ago, a concept plan was community-led, council-approved, and some changes to that concept plan were incorporated and sort of go against the overall community objectives or the community-led plan that was approved a decade ago. So I don't want to put you on the spot today and ask how those points have been met, but I want to get those questions on the record and have an answer so I can go back to my community, which has raised some significant questions through this process. Thank you.
Could I just ask if you send us those in writing, and we will get back to you on them.
I will. Thank you very much.
Is there anything else?
Autre chose? Non? Consigliere Brockington, avez-vous autre chose à ajouter? Bon, merci. Thank you for the presentation.
The board of directors. So on the report carried, our next item that's been held is the Ottawa Fire Service's 2016 annual report, rapport annuel de 2016 de services des incendies. Councillor Brockington, I believe you held this.
Yes, your worship, thank you. I realize this went through committee last week. I was at a conference and not able to attend and ask questions, so I'll try to be brief and follow up with staff on other questions. First...
Who do we have? Mr. Demonte will answer.
Yeah, Mayor, I can take a little question.
My first question is just regarding service calls that are outside the jurisdiction of the city of Ottawa, whether those take place, and when we do reply to service calls outside, how those costs are then reimbursed back to the city.
Mayor, with regards to our municipalities that surround us, we have a mutual aid agreement, so a formal agreement signed. Often Ottawa Fire Service responds because of our specialties, particular hazmat and rescue capabilities of an urban centre like Ottawa, and those costs are recovered as part of the mutual aid agreement.
And is that, sorry, by the province or those other municipalities?
Between the other municipalities and us.
Okay. And on page five, staff have provided a very helpful table illustrating calls comparing 2015 over 2016. There is a few points here that certainly drew my attention, and I would like to ask some follow-up questions. One is regarding the volume of false alarms, which I think is significant. In 2016, there were 8,721 false alarms that the OFS responded to. For chronic addresses that have false alarms, what type of steps does the Ottawa Fire Service take to educate or even charge these addresses for these chronic false alarms?
Mayor, there is follow-up on those, and we'll follow up more specifically with you and the fire chief councillor, but we do have a process by which we analyze those calls. There is follow-up with our prevention officers, because that is an important component, as you're right, there are numerous false alarms. One has to remember it's a fine balance, and the fire chief will have stated it several times publicly. When one smells heat or smoke, et cetera, we want to encourage people to call. Often those afterwards are classified as false alarms. It could be a minor problem. So a bucket of those calls are that type of call, but for the other ones, as you indicated, the more chronic ones, there is follow-up done with our prevention team, but I'll ask the chief to follow up more specifically in more detail with you.
Thank you. And the other stat that caught my attention was the number of incidents responded to for medical needs. 19% year-over-year increase, 3,449 in 2015, 4,101 incidents in 2016. Can you speak to why that number is so high?
So Mayor, this is directly related. We have a tiered response agreement, and the medical calls, obviously, it's the paramedic services, the prime agency, but we also tier police and fire on specific categories of calls where their skills can be brought to bear and assist us in saving a life. This tracks similar to what we're seeing in the paramedic report, I believe, coming to our next committee. You'll see that they've had year-over-year increases similar, so there's nothing specific here that is more outstanding. It's a trend that we're seeing across the board with regards to medical calls, and it's a continuation of what we're seeing in the paramedic service. You're seeing here on the categories of calls that fire sent to, namely unconscious and vital signs absence calls.
Okay.
Any others councillor?
I appreciate the mention of Camp Fit, which is the female firefighters in training I attended last summer, a day of...
Did you pass?
Pardon me?
Did you pass the test?
No, but I'm certainly going to encourage my daughters, if they're interested in a career in emergency services, to consider this when they come of age. Certainly a program for girls, young women 15 to 19 years of age. Anyway, it's a great program. It really is a great program, and I'd just like to encourage not members of the committee, but all of council, if you can get away this summer and attend here within Ottawa to do that. My question, though, is regarding the number of women in the Ottawa Fire Service. 16 new recruits were hired and began training in the spring of April of 2017. How is the Ottawa Fire Service doing in recruiting and retaining female firefighters?
Mayor, it is a priority of this fire chief, and he's named it publicly, that recruitment of women and increasing the diversity of the service, as well as mental health, are his two priorities. On this one in particular, the fire service in Ottawa has been finding multiple opportunities to try to encourage and bring women into the fire service. Certainly, it's a challenge, and we recruit based on people leaving us, et cetera, so the numbers yearly as we increase. It is a challenge across the country, but it's something that we're focused on. Camp Fit is only but one example. We do multiple outreach programs, so I just want to reassure you that that is the fire chief's priority.
Thank you, and I'll just note my final comment, as we've had some graduates from this camp who have gone on to become firefighters, not just in other jurisdictions, but here in Ottawa, which is a great thing. Your worship, thank you for that opportunity. Again, thank you to the men and women of the Ottawa Fire Service who serve this great city. Thank you.
Merci beaucoup. Est-ce qu'il y a d'autres questions?
Any other questions?
The report received. The next item that's been held is noise bylaw review, examen de règlement sur le bruit. I believe councillor Brockington held that as well.
Thank you, your worship. I'm getting my money's worth here this morning. Yes, so again, for this review, which I appreciate Ottawa Bylaw Services, which led this over the last couple of months, and the significant participation that members of the public provided, not just at public sessions that were hosted, but also by the online survey, which collected a significant amount of feedback. Noise, like many other wards, is a significant issue in my ward. We have a significant number of special events and festivals in River Ward, the most festivals and special events of any ward outside the downtown core. We happily embrace festivals and special events, and we have many years of working with them collaboratively to address various solutions. The survey that Ottawa Bylaw conducted talked about the base noise, which has been a problem for years emanating from some festivals and special events, and is certainly one that is an issue in River Ward. And so I'm happy that it is addressed in this report and will be addressed going forward. I know it's not an easy component of noise to measure, but I'm trying to wrap my head around, within the report, how this is going to be done going forward. How will you measure and enforce the base noise component? Because when I've read the draft bylaw that is proposed here, which is attached as document one, it says, "No person shall cause or permit any base noise, unusual noise, or noise likely to disturb the inhabitants of the city." I think we have to expect that there will be some base noise, but I'm certainly looking for those extreme cases that cause significant unrest and disturbance to residents who live beside these festivals. So I see the chief of bylaws here. I'd like to know what the plan is to measure and enforce base noise going forward.
Sorry, through you, Mayor. Currently, the provision of the bylaw that we use to enforce base noise is section two of the bylaw. It's a general noise provision. The problem that we've had recently, when we're before the courts, is that we've been challenged to weather base noise because it's not specifically addressed in the provision. We haven't been successful with our charges. So what we're recommending here is that we amend the section two to specifically include base noise, and clearly define base noise as being low-frequency noise as well as vibration. So when we get complaints about base noise, or noise in general, when we go into people's units or from the point of reception, taking the meter readings, often base noise doesn't show up on our meter. So it may show as no violation, so less than 65 decibels if an exemption's in place, but it's obvious to us when we go into their unit that pictures are vibrating on the wall or things are vibrating on the table, things like that. So it's obvious to us that there is a violation, there is a disturbance to the neighbor. So at that point, we can now issue a charge, if possible. But I'd also like to mention that, you know, previous calls that we've had involving festivals and event organizers, we've had great collaboration with them, and they've been very responsive to our concerns about base noise in the communities, and have done everything possible to try and reduce base noise where possible. So we'll continue those efforts with those organizers, but in extreme cases where we're not getting compliance, at least now, it's clear, it's specific in the provision, and we go ahead and issue the charge.
Thank you. I mean, you know full well the special events and festivals that take place in River Ward, and we've had many, many conversations, so I've appreciated your commitment over the years to address issues for my residents. The other question I wanted to raise was not regarding base noise, but snow clearing operators. And again, I understand the need to allow this service to be conducted in the evenings and through the night. We want to make sure our roads and parking lots on private property are cleared, but for residential communities that neighbor government complexes, shopping strip malls that can't be cleared during the day because they have staff or patrons there who have to clear at night, there has been ongoing concerns in certain sections of my ward about the operators who operate at night. Is there any way that we can work together after today to look at solutions where we don't give a 24-hour carte blanche authority to these operators, but try and streamline, whether they do it between 6:00 PM and midnight, or even 6:00 PM at 1:00, but through the night, these ongoing challenges, particularly in winters where we have a lot of snow and the impact it has on residents? Is there anything that you can suggest? I know you're not addressing it in this bylaw review, but is there anything you can suggest going forward that may have been worked in other situations or other wards?
Yes, Mayor. So we did consider several options, regulating snow clearing and snow removal noise in the wee hours of the night. In reviewing public opinion research that we did, as well as the online survey that we did, it was clear that residents, although had comments about different noise created from the snow clearing operation, specifically the backup beepers, we felt that we had a clear message from the residents of Ottawa, that it was more important to have these streets and public, the parking lots and things, plowed through the night to ensure safety and mobility for the residents in the morning. But we did discover what's called a broadband backup beeper, so we are doing some further research on that, and actually, we have a council or a committee directive to explore that option further. So we're hoping that we'll be able to come forward early next year with a solution that may work.
I appreciate that. I mean, I certainly work with property managers and other people who are in charge of snow clearing to work out some sort of possible solutions, but when you have a bylaw in place that gives them 24-hour access, some of these challenges do come up, so I wanted to raise that, and maybe I can work with you offline again on that matter. But again, I wanted to thank Ottawa Bylaw staff for conducting this review. I think it was certainly necessary, and certainly a lot of comments had come in, and we're going to make some changes here, which I will be supporting. Thanks very much.
Great, thank you. Councillor McKenney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was at committee for all of the discussion that happened around the noise bylaw, and while I had asked staff to look at a 9:00 AM time for construction starts on Saturday, that wasn't successful. The motion didn't get through committee. But I do, you know, I feel like I do need to point out that, you know, noise happens more in areas, and noise complaints are generated in areas where people, you know, live closer together, obviously, and if you just look at the first quarter results from bylaw for 2017 as an example, and this is all noise, this is not just construction noise, but I think you can extrapolate from these numbers. Sorry. I've never been accused of not speaking loud enough. It's odd for me. Here I go. So, you know, for Ward 12, for example, there were 307 noise complaints, for my ward, 263, and that compares with, you know, five for some, eight, three is, I think, the lowest. So it's, you know, I think, and I don't, you know, we can't blame this on festivals. I get very few complaints about Blues Fest anymore. I get none about Glow Fair. So this is, you know, general noise. So, you know, in my office alone, I get people, residents, calling me anytime there's construction happening in their neighborhood, almost daily. And so it would have been nice to give people a 9:00 AM start on Saturday. I thought that two hours a week to let people rest wasn't asking for too much, but I think that going forward, I would like to, and I do have an inquiry, which I will read out at the end of council meeting when we go through inquiries, but essentially, and I worked with staff on this, looking for other measures that we can put in place to mitigate private construction noise, and look at what opportunities could be developed to reduce noise disruption. You know, when I'm working with the Light Rail Office, for example, and they come to me for exemptions, I get asked for exemptions, maybe not daily, but close, from someone, and I think that the chief of bylaw services can vouch for me, that I'm actually pretty darn good at giving those exemptions. But what that allows me to do is work with who's asking for them, to say, you know, if in fact it is too loud, what are some of the measures that we can put in place? And that's, you know, and that's important. I think it's, you know, just having that flexibility, having that leverage with whoever the developer is, the builder is, the contractor is, it allows me to work on behalf of my residents, us to work on behalf of our residents, to make sure that they're able to live with, you know, some mitigation from what can be very loud noise. You know, when jackhammering happens from 11:00 PM till 6:00 AM, which happened all last summer, people call my office actually crying. They are physically disturbed by it. So I will do the inquiry, I will work with staff to look at other opportunities to mitigate noise that, you know, it's easy enough to do it with our staff, but to look at those opportunities for private developers. Thank you.
Great, thank you councillor McKenney. Councillor Cadry, please, on the issue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And on this noise bylaw, Mr. Mayor, I do have concerns as one of the busiest areas for construction that is happening in the city of Ottawa in terms of Stittsville. And based on that, I had requested from staff to maybe move the Saturday morning start time from 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM. And again, people were wondering, well, why would one hour make such a difference? It's a weekend. I've got a lot of young families that have, you know, kids sleeping on the weekends. So based on that, Mr. Mayor, and based on the request from my community, I'm going to dissent on the report, although I think the report overall is not a bad report. It's just the construction noise becomes a hiccup in this particular process, especially on the weekends. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So on the report is presented carried, councillor Cadry dissents, and McKenney, Newswallman Fleury.
No, no, no.
Oh, okay. Okay, the next item that was held is planning committee report number 43B, rapport numéro 3B du comité de l'urbanisme, application for demolition and new construction at 270 Buckin Road, property designated under part five of the Ontario Heritage Act and located in the Rockliff Park Heritage Conservation District. Councillor Newswallman, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to provide just a few remarks of context for this item. I think, as colleagues know, this item originally came to the Built Heritage Subcommittee with a recommendation from staff that the application for demolition be refused. That was upheld at the Built Heritage Subcommittee and then went to Planning Committee, at which the staff recommendation motion lost on a tie, and that led to the replacement motion, which is before us today. I will be opposing the replacement motion, and should it fail, putting forward a motion by me, seconded by the mayor, with the original staff recommendation back on the table, but I recognize that what's before us right now is the replacement motion from planning. I thought it might be useful just to provide a very brief, just three brief comments on this file, because I know that many colleagues have not had a benefit of hearing the discussion that happened either at Built Heritage or at Planning. And I think what's important to note is that the Rockliff Park Heritage Conservation District, which was established back in 1997, also had guidelines, which were created the following year, which essentially set out rules for properties, whether it's additions or whether it's facades or appearances or massing or scale, demolition, et cetera. There was a fairly comprehensive set of guidelines that served the community well, but when amendments to the Ontario Heritage Act came in the mid-2000s, there was an opportunity for heritage conservation districts to essentially have greater teeth, and the Ontario Heritage Act provided that plans could be established in all heritage conservation districts. That led to a very robust process within Rockliff Park of first evaluating all 800 properties, which was done both by city heritage staff and by members of the Rockliff Park Residents Association Heritage Committee, and then that started in about 2012, and then two years of work on the actual plan, which started, I think, back in 2014, which culminated in the plan being finalized and brought to council last year. It was passed unanimously by us here at council, and the community celebrated that because it was an opportunity... And the community celebrated that because it was an opportunity, as I said, to both strengthen and to provide teeth to those original guidelines, to modernize it, and also to make sure that there was greater certainty in terms of how to manage growth in the village moving forward. One thing that is important to note is that the draft plan was subject to a lot of public discussion, a lot of public consultation. We had a public meeting prior to the plan coming to council, at which almost 100 residents came. And interestingly and importantly, there was near unanimous support for the plan. People recognized and felt that it was important that the unique character of the village was preserved, and for that reason, there was strong public support for it. Importantly, though, the plan is not a freezing of Rockliff Park. It is a management plan. It sets very clear rules for situations of, again, of additions and amassing and scale. But it also ensures that in many cases, if people want to demolish their properties, there is a process for that. And in fact, since council passed the plan a year ago, staff have recommended that three houses be demolished. They are so-called Grade II houses, so they have a score of 100 of less than 50. But in the matter at hand, we're dealing with a property that was scored originally in 80 out of 100 and then revised to a 69, but well over the 50 threshold. And I really think it's important for colleagues to recognize that, given that this is the first time that staff have recommended refusal and the first time that the plan in some ways has been put to the test, there is a real feeling that in order for the plan to have meaning, it needs to be upheld by us, by the group that passed it last year. And it's important to note as well that because the plan is under appeal, heritage staff here in the city evaluated the property both under the original 1998 guidelines and under the 2016 plan, and were very clear in their recommendation that the application failed under both bodies. So that's just some important context. I think we have an opportunity here to demonstrate that we support the plan which we passed last year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Excuse me, councillor Newsbaum. Other comments or questions?
Questions, yes.
It's all in one. Councillor Tierney.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I do appreciate the Chair of Heritage with those points. I did want to highlight something. We spent quite a bit of time discussing this at Planning Committee, and I really wish this was about heritage. Unfortunately, that's not the case. We dealt with the fact that we have to be able to defend what we do to the Ontario Municipal Board. And based on the information that was provided at that Planning Committee, there's many holes, whether it's the fact there was claims of Mr. Selden living in the house that were fictitious, that never happened, given a different scoring than what was originally presented, whether it was the fact there was claims of vegetation on the property and trees, or if you've ever walked the property, there's nothing. Compounded by the fact, yesterday at Planning Committee, we had to hold an item that was related to issuance of a building permit. But it was noted, when we pulled the item and we spoke for it over an hour, that there was no demolition permit. So I asked the same questions. Would they have had to go through the same matrix, the same scoring as this property we're dealing with today? And the answer was yes. But we were still going to go ahead and issue a building permit, basically telling people, tear down your houses, go ahead and build. That's not what the purpose of this heritage design plan is. If we really want to make this effective, and we don't want this to go to the Ontario Municipal Board at the end of the year and have a "I told you so" moment, where it loses and pokes holes like Swiss cheese in a plan that is meant to protect the community, we have to allow this to take place today. I do have a few questions, actually, Mr. Mark.
Great. One of my questions that I have is related to, if we make a decision today for demolition, would this help save the Rothwell Heritage Design Plan?
Rockliff.
Rockliff, forgive me. Rothwell's mine.
Mr. Mayor, the Rockliff Heritage Conservation District Plan is under appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, and I can say nothing further in open session.
So on that, I've been looking at what our level of success is, and forgive me for asking many of the same questions that took place at Planning, but unfortunately, my council members weren't part of that long discussion. What's our chances of success based on what you see in front of you today, especially with the fact that in the original scoring in 2010 versus 2017, rather than changing the two categories where it was identified an individual didn't live and there was no vegetation, they changed all the categories and all the scoring? Will this have an impact at the OMB?
Mr. Mayor, I'm understanding the council's questions are focused solely on the matter of 270 Buckin, and if the council also wants me to express an opinion on the Heritage Conservation District Plan, I, of course, would be pleased to do so. With respect to the application for demolition and new construction, I have had the opportunity since committee to reach the, read the cultural heritage district study, impact study. And I was struck, when I read it, Mr. Mayor, by the fact that the study is really focused on commending the new building. That is where the author decided to direct her efforts. I did not find there to be much on the question of the demolition of the existing structure. And I have to say, Mr. Mayor, that that struck me, because, of course, the first step to redevelopment of the site would have to be the demolition of the existing building. So I'm loathe, in light of past experience, to give a percentage, Mr. Mayor. But what I will say is, I think the city's chances are slightly better than 50/50. I think we have, on balance, an opportunity to be successful at the Ontario Municipal Board with respect to the application for demolition and construction at 270 Buckin.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I wish, that was always the case at the OMB, but we know we don't have much success. I think, based on what happened yesterday, a Planning Committee as well, by us blocking the construction after they tore down the house, we'll have an issue there as well. I do have a couple more questions. I've had some comments and some communications about other grade, we've never seen a Grade I property torn down before. Can you comment on that? Have we seen Grade I properties torn down?
Mr. Mayor, the Grade I and Grade II categorizations of properties was completed as part of the study for the new Rockliff Park Heritage Conservation District Plan. And since the evaluations were completed and the plan was adopted, this is the only application that we have received for the demolition of a Grade I building that was scored according to the new scoring system that was adopted as part of the renewal of the heritage plan.
So it was brought to my attention that there is a property on Acacia that was listed Grade I, was above the 50, and it was torn down within the last two years. Do you care to comment on that?
Mr. Mayor, the application for that particular property at 285 Acacia was received prior to the adoption of the Heritage Conservation District Plan by City Council in the spring of 2016. It was demolished in 2015. In addition, at the time, there was another test that the city used, is whether it was included on the former heritage inventory of Rockliff Park, and that building was not. In the case of 270 Buckin, the building was both on the former inventory of heritage resources and received a score of 69, whereas the score of 285 Acacia was 56.
Correct. So, yes, there has been a, something that has scored over the 50 that has been torn down.
Mr. Mayor, not since the adoption of the Heritage Conservation District Plan in 2016.
So I have a few more questions related to, yesterday we were presented with some information by court, thank you for that. I believe councillor Hubley asked for that information quite a while ago, and we only had it in front of us last night. I actually got confused when I was going through some of it as well, because originally, we had the 2010 for the same property with the scoring. And when it was highlighted that Mr. Selden never lived there, there's no vegetation in the property, rather than just changing the two categories, it appears the whole scoring system was completely changed. Then there was an attached 2016 version, which doesn't correlate at all. There's, it's not the same number. It shows 80, and the other one shows 80.65. And then in the 2017 addition, I'll call it, it now shows a number of 69. All these changes in three versions of documents, is there no standard template that's to be used across the board? Because even yesterday, I was looking at the scoring, the numbers that it was out of didn't match. And I just think this adds more fuel to a case at the OMB against us.
So, Mayor, I can advise that this is the same scoring methodology we've used in all of our Heritage Conservation District plans. By Word, the Five Sandy Hill, the former city of Ottawa used this scoring methodology as well. As the vice chair pointed out, the applicant did bring new information to us once they filed their application with respect to the Sevens, the amount of time that they lived in the property, and with changes that have been made to the property since we had done our initial scoring back in 2016. So as we've indicated, the plans are flexible, and we reevaluated the house in those two categories, which brought the scoring down from 80, which was assigned in 2016, to 69 in 2017.
And when I look at a situation like back when it was, the Acadia House, for example, there was so many points set aside because the Rockliff mayor lived in that house. We clearly identified nobody lived in this house, that was quote-unquote of importance. But yet they still had 10 in that category. I'm having a hard time with how that, what rationale is. And that's what this is about, is about rationale and defending rationale. Can you just comment on that?
Mr. Mayor, when the fact was revealed that Mr. Selden had not lived there for as long as we had thought, and that was, we were willing to correct the record as soon as we received that information, we dropped it down from a, to a fair. And the fair score was given to, in similar houses, and we evaluated over 800 houses in Rockliff Park. And if a house had been inhabited by someone who was active in the community and owned for a long time by the same person, in this case, 45 years, he's a well-known person in the community and a member of a well-known lumbering family, so all the other houses that were similar, that is, lived in by the same person for a long time and associated with some aspect of Ottawa's history, they were all given a fair. So this received a fair that is consistent with the scoring that was undertaken and arrived at through consensus with city staff and members of the Rockliff community. And so that's why, when we discovered the error, we knew the score to drop it to, to be consistent with the other 800 forms that we had undertaken in the evaluation period.
Great. I'll go back to the bottom of the list.
Well, you only get one chance. This is your five minutes.
Well, can I at least, I have more questions, unfortunately.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's the rules under the procedure bylaw.
Can I at least wrap up?
Well, I'll give you 30 seconds if you want to wrap up.
Thank you for the 30 seconds. I do appreciate that. First of all, I'm hoping somebody else asks a couple of quick questions in regards to the lumbering family. I looked at the report that was circulated last night, there was no mention of this. It's news to me about the detail behind it where other reports have it. That being said, I want to really illustrate the fact, I'm not against heritage. This is not a heritage situation. Rothwell, I put a heritage designation on three streets in my ward last term. I supported my friend Jeff Leaper on Broadview Public School being a heritage designation. That's not what this is about. This is about rationale and what is going to hold up in front of our true test, which is the OMB, which exists today but not tomorrow. And we have to be stronger in what we do. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McKenney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I won't be supporting the replacement motion. I will be supporting the staff recommendation, of course. So just, just to clarify, this is, this Grade I property, this, there has not been demolition since this plan was adopted months ago for another Grade I property in this plan. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
And how many others? So you stand by your evaluation, obviously. How many other properties in this new Rockliff Park Heritage Conservation District Plan, do you have an estimate of how many other properties could come to us with this score and be asked to be demolished?
Mr. Mayor, there are, in the Heritage Conservation District, 312 Grade I buildings and 406 or something, Grade II buildings. So there, that is, 312 buildings that the guidelines indicate we would not, that demolition would not be recommended. I can't speculate on how many applications we will receive.
Fair enough, but it's safe to say, then, that we could get dozens of others that are around 69, 70 out of 100, and this would set a precedence for those, if in fact we agreed to allow it to be demolished.
Mr. Mayor, in preparation for this meeting, I looked at the numbers that were Category 1 and Category 2, but I didn't look at how many were 70 and up or 50 to 70, so I can't actually supply that answer.
For, Mr. Mark, just back to the appeal, the OMB appeal, do we know, who is appealing the plan?
The question was, who's appealing the heritage conservation?
Who is appealing the heritage plan?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it's the applicant in this case, Anne Richcraft.
So it's Richcraft who's appealing the plan and also asking for the demolition at the same time?
My understanding is that it is an individual applicant for the demolition and new construction, and it is that applicant, Anne Richcraft, who are the appellant of the Heritage Conservation District Plan.
Thank you. I have no other questions.
Great. Thank you. Councillor Wilkinson, please. Questions and comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that I think was asked, I'm on the committee, so I know we spent a lot of time on this, and I had difficulty in understanding the, all of the heritage things, because it lends to me, returning to more statisticians than actually real heritage things. And I find that typical of this city with a lot of the planning things. We do it by figures and numbers and things like that, not looking at what you're going to end up with. Is the whole purpose of this not to be that we keep the character of Rockliff the same as it is now? As the objective? I think you have to know what the overall objective is.
Mr. Mayor, the objective of any Heritage Conservation District is to preserve the cultural heritage value of the designated place and to manage change within the Heritage Conservation District. So what we do is balance, balance changes to buildings and landscapes against the, to make, against the character of the district and to make sure that all change reflects the defined heritage character and attributes as laid out in the Heritage Conservation District Plan.
Okay. So when you get a plan for a new building, for example, if that new building going in somewhere, let's say it's not even this location, if that new building plan fits in and would be adaptable to the character and fit into the character of that community, would you then approve it?
Mr. Mayor, we make recommendations to council for approval, but in that particular instance, we would recommend approval of a building if it met the guidelines that are in the Heritage Conservation District Plan.
And in this particular case, if this building didn't exist, and they put forward the plan that they have already submitted to show you what would go there, would what they've designed as replacement, in your opinion, fit into that character?
Mr. Mayor, the applicant presented the drawings and then in the last little while has made some changes to them at the request of heritage staff. So there are May 5 drawings of the building that if, that staff has no objection to.
Okay. So what's the problem here is that not taking down a building to replace with a building that would fit in is what the real issue is here, then? Is that, am I clear on that?
To be clear, the staff recommendation, Mayor, is to... To be clear, the staff recommendation, Mayor, is to recommend against demolition of the property. We were directed at Planning Committee to work with the applicant on revised elevations that would meet the spirit of the guidelines for Rockliff Park Heritage Conservation District, so it's a separate stream, if you will. And that's exactly what we've done. We've worked with them over the last two weeks on arriving at a set of elevations that are acceptable to staff should demolition proceed.
So we have a situation where the replacement would fit in, but you don't want them to replace it, you want to keep what's there. Is that roughly what we're talking about?
That is absolutely correct.
Now, part of the thing about a house is that people live in them, and it's their living area. And the interior of a living area is very important for how a family lives. This particular family has found that the way that that house is sort of broken up inside, et cetera, is not very compatible to their family's structure. So what you're saying is, we're going to actually control how people can live because rather than letting them put something that fits our guidelines in the end, that would be one where they would have the kind of house interior that they'd like to. That's where I'm, that's the problem I've had all along with this one.
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond to that question. This goes back to Ms. Coates' reply on the purpose of Heritage Conservation Districts in the first place, that the intent of Heritage Conservation Districts is to identify areas within the city where they have significant cultural heritage attributes, either through a combination of individual buildings or by a combination of buildings and cultural landscape character. The intent of Heritage Conservation Districts is to maintain into the future those aspects worthy of heritage value to continue into the future. We don't take positions one way or the other on the internal configurations of houses in the lot, like, as a matter of fact, our guidelines and policies do allow for modifications of buildings. And had an application been filed for a modification of the building, that would have been given due process and consideration, ultimately brought forward to council. So I think I want to reiterate Ms. Coates' position about the intent of the Heritage Conservation Districts and what their intended, the outcome they're supposed to have. And to address your question, there is flexibility to modify buildings in districts with respect to the guidelines in the management plans.
But we're not allowing them to take a building, remove it, and put a new building in which meets the guidelines. That's really what the issue is here.
Mr. Mayor, staff's position is that we don't support the removal of the building. It has heritage value, so we don't support it. However, based on committee's direction, we reviewed independently the new proposal and feel that the new proposal would meet the intent of the guidelines if council chooses to approve it.
Okay.
This is the issue that I've had with this all the way along, is that it really, I thought that the new building was actually a bit, the landscaping they wanted to put on it and everything else was better. I was really surprised at how high they ranked the landscaping on this building because they erected it a lot higher than another building in Rockliff Park that has far improved landscaping over this one. So it's a very subjective rating. You know, it really is one that, it's in the eyes of the beholder, and every person looks at things differently. And that gave me a lot of difficulty too, with the changing in the numbers and various other things. So I actually support the revised position that was done by planning staff, because the question I had at the time was, would the new building fit in? Now that we know it does, and actually will not deter from the whole cultural value of the village, which is important, then I don't see why we're standing in people's way. We keep talking about in heritage buildings, that reusing them to make them so that they meet modern needs, and as they put frontages on them so they meet modern, the style of this building is almost the same as the other one, it's just got a different way of arranging the rooms and windows and things. So it's almost like a reuse that makes good use of the building. I'm a great supporter of them. I had the first heritage building ever in Kanata. I pushed forward to get done, and I've done a number of other buildings. And I've helped people to do modifications to them that fit in. This one, to my mind, this doesn't fit into that category. It is a family home. It's going to be replaced by a family home that meets the guidelines. And I really have a real problem in shattering people's ability to use their properties because of that. And we now know, yesterday I think they dealt with one, a person illegally took the building down, and then very calmly said, yes, you can have a building permit. So the whole thing is, is something they have to do is send somebody with a bomb to blow the place up, and then they get a building permit. Or they leave it empty and vagabonds do it for them. It's really one of these, we've had empty heritage programs before that causes lots and lots of problems. It's much better if they're occupied and they're being used in some way. And they have a tenant in there now, but they don't have to keep that there. I just think this is one where we should say, this one will work. I wouldn't do this for every property, but this particular one seems, I just don't see how we could take any other objective view of it and better people's use of their own properties. There are still a few property rights in this country, I thought. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So just for clarification on Councillor Wilkinson's point, interior renovations are permitted. Is that correct?
Correct, Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Hubley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really happy to hear that staff have reviewed the application, and if we approve demolition today, that they will be working with the applicant to make sure that the new property does fit the goals of the heritage plan. Along with Councillor Tierney and Councillor Wilkinson's comments, I had a lot of difficulty with this committee on the scoring side of it. I read the scoring sheets. I saw how important it was that this Robert Southam had lived in the house, and that, you know, the mature trees on the property added to the environment of the neighborhood. And I understood where they were going, until I found out that this guy never lived there. And so the thirty points that went down in the report for somebody important living there, didn't have another name to replace it. The trees that they were adding value to the environment and giving not just thirty points, but I'd say a weighted score, Mr. Mayor, so I think it's something like forty-five percent of the weight of the score goes to the environment, but these trees weren't even on their property. These trees are on the next property over, so they're not being touched by this plan at all. So if that's where the scores were arrived at, then I think to be fair to any applicant, we should be revising those scores and either coming up with something else that generates the score remaining, or recognize that this is not a grade-one property. It was made a grade-one because of errors in the information submitted. So I find that troubling. It was really compounded yesterday at planning when we had a case where same neighborhood, what someone's done is just demolished and then came in. And what's being recommended is that we reward the demo and give them a fast track. They would have been walking out with a permit yesterday if we had agreed to this, whereas someone that's following all the rules and trying to respect the plan, this very important plan that the community wants to keep in place, someone that's trying to follow all those rules, we're going to punish them and say, no, go spend a whole bunch more money to go to the O M B, show them how we messed up the scoring here, and how we're now revising to try to match up to our numbers. And good luck, sometimes the things we give Mr. Mark to defend for us at the O M B, I don't think we pay him enough to defend us for doing things like this. I'm disappointed in it. I think we're sending the wrong message by trying to say, no, no, we have to blanketly refuse this because it doesn't match up to the plan. I think it's very, very important to be honest in our scoring and be able to justify those scores for people. So, Mr. Mayor, I find in this case here, and especially with the news today, that staff have come to a good compromise with the applicant, I'm excited to hear that. So I'll be supporting the partial demo of this building so that they can get on building what looks like a good house. I want to add one more point to it that goes to the information provided. Many of you may have saw some of the reports in the media, I think it was Metroland editorial, that talked about this being a monster house inserted into the neighborhood, where in fact, what we learned at planning is the new house is of the same size as the neighbors around it. And just last year, the house one or two lots over was demoed and rebuilt. So it's not like this is the first house that's going to be modernized and reinstated so that it will be there for many years to come. But it is a house that someone has taken an interest in and wants to make an investment in, and I think we should be supporting that and rewarding the fact that they just didn't demo it and come in and ask for a rebuild permit. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Cloutier, please.
Merci énormément, Monsieur le Maire. Just, Councillor Wilkinson and Councillor Hubley have said that staff now have reached a compromise with their proponent. Can, I haven't seen documents on that. Ms. Coates or Mr. Currie, can you comment on that? Does staff still, the original report to Planning Committee on recommended refusal, and I recognize that Planning Committee had two votes on the issue, you update me on staff's position?
So councillor, I draw your attention to the memo I issued yesterday early afternoon. It reflects the conversations that we've had with the applicant since Planning Committee on April twenty-fifth for the motion moved by the vice chair to work with the applicant on determining whether we can arrive at a set of elevations that respect the Rockliff Park Heritage Conservation District guidelines. So there were five areas that we worked with the applicant on, and in all cases, the applicant was amenable to making changes such that their application would comply with the guidelines.
Overall, does staff still support refusing the demolition of two-seventy Buckins Road?
Absolutely, councillor. As Ms. Coates has indicated, it's a grade-one building of the highest caliber in this plan approved by council last year, so we were carrying out the work directed by us by committee and pleased with the outcome, but nevertheless, our position must remain the same.
Do further to Councillor Tierney's comments about who lived there, Mr. Southam, and how long, and landscaping, do you anticipate receiving any new information that would reduce the score?
Mr. Mayor, no. The issues that were brought to our attention regarding the original inhabitant and the landscape that was changed between the time the building was originally evaluated and today, we don't anticipate anything further. But again, we were willing to do the analysis and change the score because there were reasonable requests raised regarding the original application and the landscape, and we thought that it was appropriate to respond to these particular requests and look at the evaluation of the building.
The original score was eighty and the new score is sixty-nine, is that correct?
That's correct.
And all the elements that have been brought forth by my colleagues are factored into that sixty-nine score?
Yes.
The residence and landscaping?
That's correct.
And the sixty-nine score is a, makes this a grade-one house?
Yes, fifty and above is a grade-one house, Mr. Mayor.
If we refuse the demolition of this property, the proponents, the owners, are still able to change the inside of the house as they see fit to make it more livable?
Yes, the interiors are not regulated under the Ontario, in buildings that are designated under Part Five of the Ontario Heritage Act, councillor.
The proponents are able to landscape as they see fit, or are there restrictions?
There are no restrictions. There's a process. We work with any application, any owner who is anticipating changes to their property and issue permits accordingly. Landscape changes are usually issued through delegated authorities, so that's through staff. It's a rapid process.
Thank you. Merci, Monsieur le Maire.
Councillor Fleury, s'il vous plaît.
Merci, Monsieur le Maire. Question to Mr. Willis. I'm sorry, Mr. Willis, I wasn't at committee yesterday. I did hear about it and did read the report. Just to clarify, that the property that was illegally demolished, not the one that's in front of us today, what grade was that property? That wasn't a grade-one property, is that correct?
It was a grade-two property.
And we are, there are legal proceedings for that property?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to comment at length at matters that will be before legal proceedings, but I would, just to clarify, there are two distinct issues in the other file. One is the matter of the demolition, and the other is the application that we are required to process under the Ontario Heritage Act for a replacement building. So those are two distinct items, just for clarifying the facts in the case.
Thank you, Mr. Willis.
That's helpful. Thank you. Councillor Eggly.
I also don't sit on the Planning Committee. I want to start off by thanking both the applicant and the representatives from the Rockliff Community Association as well as staff, because I've had a lot of questions over the last couple of days, and whether on a volunteer basis or on a professional basis, people have taken the time to explain their positions and to answer those questions. So I want to thank all involved for this. Though I still have a couple of questions. So the ten percent that's awarded, if I understand the explanation, it's awarded because the house was simply inhabited for sixty years. Doesn't really matter all that much who inhabited it, but somebody lived in the house for sixty years on a continuous basis.
Mr. Mayor, may I answer this first? Ms. Coates can collect, correct me if I am wrong. I want to make sure that it's understood that the reference to Mr. Southam did get addressed through the correction in the scoring, but there was another person who inhabited that house of local significance, which is A. Barnett McLaren, who is, and the McLaren family lived in that house for many, many years, and the McLaren family is strongly associated with the history of the Rockliff Park community. So I just want to make sure that that fact is on the record, that the remaining score that exists after the rescore has a lot to do with the McLaren family, not the Southam family.
No, and I appreciate that clarification, but that's not in the report, as I understand it, and it wasn't in front of committee when they had that discussion.
Mr. Mayor, the reference to the McLaren is in the 2017 scoring sheet evaluations which were submitted, and that is part of the reevaluation process. It was actually included.
So again, Mr. Willis, just a clarification, so that factor was in front of Planning Committee?
No. No. Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow me to confer with staff.
Yes, the Heritage Survey and Evaluation Form that was prepared by city staff and then evaluated by the Rockliff Committee, that was included in the report to council, mentions Mr. McLaren.
We can deal with the point of order. I don't know if I should go or not go.
I'm not quite sure what your point of order is.
Right here, and it doesn't mention the other family. It only mentions Southam. And this is the report they just sent us.
All right, so Mr. Mark, could you answer that, please? Clarify?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. It is on, it's mentioned on page six in the background to the report, designed by Hazel Grove and Mills in nineteen forty for Robert Southam. It was soon so to A. Barnett McLaren, whose family lived there until nineteen ninety-five.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Now, can you share with us how many homes are on, I believe the entire list is two hundred properties? Of the two hundred properties, are there any other properties on that list that are designed by the same architect, Mr. Hazelwood?
Mr. Mayor, yesterday, anticipating this question, we have all that information in place, and I had someone student count how many buildings that Mr. Hazel Grove was involved with the design of. He had a number of firms with different names. So out of the three hundred and sixteen buildings that are category-one buildings, he designed, or was involved in the design of thirty-one.
So ten percent of the total list were designed by the same individual or firms he was affiliated with?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. The other question is, and I want to thank Court for explaining this to me yesterday, because it is a bit nuanced. The proposed new building, if it was anywhere else but Rockliff, would meet the existing zoning, and the people would be allowed to build as of-- zoning, and the people would be allowed to build as of right? And by proposed, I mean the original design, not the one that you now have, but the original design would have been, would have met our zoning laws and requirements and would have been allowed to be built?
So Mayor, my understanding is that this application will require no further, besides a heritage permit or a building permit, there are no committee of adjustment or rezoning implications required, should they wish to rebuild a new property?
Okay. And, but in Rockliff, there's an overlay. There's a set of guidelines that even if you meet zoning, you, that may not get you through the door. There's other things you might have to do, is that not correct?
Yes, Counselor, because there's a Heritage Conservation District, a heritage permit is required in this case, so when affected, it operates as an overlay.
So in this particular case, the second set of designs, I think the date was May 5th, that came forward from the applicant, staff has reviewed that and feels that it meets both the zoning rules and the conditions of the overlay?
That would be correct. It meets the conditions of the Heritage Conservation District Plan.
Okay. And if it was to be built in my ward or Counselor Wilkinson's ward, the zoning would have been enough to get it built. You wouldn't have had to have gone to that second level of the, of an overlay, correct?
Correct, Mayor. If it was, if this was a house being built in an R1 zoning and there was no Heritage Conservation District, and the lot was of size where the committee of adjustment applications were not required, it would be permissible.
So is there anywhere else, other than Rockliff in the city, where this house, the original design house, could not have been built? As long as it had R1 zoning?
Mr. Mayor, I'll start off, and then Mr. Currie and Ms. Koots may wish to step in. There are, of course, many other areas of the city where there are Heritage Conservation Districts in place, and some have district plans, some just have guidelines, but a heritage analysis would have to take place, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, no, I appreciate that clarification. Thank you for that. So, at the end of the day, and again, I do thank everybody who's provided information, because it has been very, very helpful. But at the end of the day, I find a lot of sense in the argument of Counselor Wilkinson, in that we don't want you to demolish, but if you did demolish, we're quite fine with what you want to replace it with. And it's almost Monty Pythonist in that approach. So, you meet the rules, you can build, but we don't want you to build. And yet, yesterday, and again, I wasn't there, we have, we have an applicant that ignored the rules and is being rewarded, and this question is to you, Mr. Mark, is there any way the city could stop the individual from yesterday, the applicant from yesterday, from building whatever they want to build?
Mr. Mayor, the applicant, the 83 Pocel property needs a heritage permit, and if that permit was refused, then subject to an appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, they could not proceed with a new construction.
Sorry, I didn't hear. What kind of a permit?
The property at 83 Pocel also requires a heritage permit under the Rockliff Heritage Conservation District Plan, and if that permit were refused, they also could not proceed with a new construction.
How does the 90-day rule apply, though, in this particular case?
Mr. Mayor, if an application for a permit, be it for demolition or new construction, is submitted to the city and it is not considered within 90 days, it is deemed approved.
So is that what happened in this particular case? Going back to my first question, so the applicant from yesterday can go ahead and build, correct?
Mr. Mayor, the 90 days are not up yet, so I can't answer that question.
But we didn't approve yesterday. Is there any way for us to prove between now and when the 90 days runs its course? Or procedurally, has that ship sailed?
No, Mr. Mayor, the rules of procedure provide that a counselor could introduce a motion to council today and seek to have the item dealt with at the next meeting of council.
Okay, thank you for that. So, again, the logic that Counselor Wilkinson's put forward this morning, I find very persuasive. And for that reason, I'll be, I'll be following her lead on this and taking the same position that she does on the vote.
Just to follow up on a point the Counselor raised, we keep raising this issue of the other case from yesterday. Was that demolished illegally, that property? Did they have a demolition permit?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, at this stage of the game, with the investigations continuing and the facts being assembled, I won't actually use a specific term. It is a matter under investigation by the chief building official, as well as our city legal, with respect to both the Ontario Building Code Act and the Ontario Heritage Act.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Chernysenko?
I'm quite surprised, actually. Counselor Egli and I usually see, I don't have many things and follow similar logic, but it's in fact the logic that I have to call into question here, that because the replacement might be acceptable, we would therefore be in favor of eliminating what currently exists. By that same logic, that beautiful mature tree on the yard in our neighborhood that everyone wants protected, but because staff are okay with the maple being planted to replace it if somebody illegally cut it down, therefore, it's okay to cut it down. That's the exact same logic that I'm finding here. And although our staff, who were instructed to work with the applicant, to find ways to make their proposal more compatible with the Heritage District guidelines, that's not the same thing as saying or implying that our staff are now in favor of it. In fact, they've said on several locations that they're not. And I cannot follow the logic that because it would be a beautiful house that would replace it, that would otherwise meet the guidelines, and yet, it's very clear the house shouldn't be demolished, that we can therefore vote in favor of demolishing. So, on that alone, I cannot support the demolition and will continue to support the staff's position on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on the matter? Well, let me offer a couple of comments on this. This is an issue that's received a great deal of lobbying and attention and focus by both, both sides of the issue. But I'm asking members of council to support our Heritage District Plan and vote against demolishing this building. Now, just to put it in perspective, even before the cities were amalgamated, Rockliff was actually ahead of its time in going forward. I think they probably figured out amalgamation was coming down the pipe, and in fact, it did in their term of council in 97 to 2000, and they went ahead and designated the Rockliff Park Heritage Conservation District. When amalgamation took place many years later, the city and this council, and I remind everyone, we all voted for the Rockliff Park Heritage Conservation District, and we all knew what we were voting for. It was to protect and preserve the character of that particular community. And in preparation of the plan, every building in the district was researched and analyzed, evaluated with a score based on environmental, historical, and architectural significance. And yes, there were changes to the score because new information came forward since the original scoring. I think that would be only sensible for our staff to come forward if they discovered that that tree or that shrub was not on the property, to make an alteration. But even with an alteration, it still remained the highest grade, grade-one building in the Heritage District Conservation Area. And I guess I mentioned the issue of, you know, people have said, well, you know, the building's not, not in good shape. Well, there's someone living there, and it meets all the standards of the City of Ottawa, the building code. And grade-one buildings cannot be demolished except in extraordinary circumstances, and those extraordinary circumstances are things like fire or flood damage and so on. And it should be noted that although council approved the Rockliff Plan only in 2016, the house located at 270 Buckens Road is one of the original 200 buildings that received the highest designation by the previous municipality of Rockliff in 1997. So I think what we have before us is a key opportunity for us to support what we all supported unanimously in the Heritage Conservation District vote in 2016. And it would seem rather strange, literally, the ink isn't dried on the document, and we're already the first application through the door, we're ready to throw out the entire Heritage District Conservation Area. And as someone pointed out, I can't remember who asked the question, this does set a precedent. All of a sudden, if someone sees this happening, why not open the floodgates and, you know, I've got a grade-one building, I'm going to ask for demolition because I want to put a different building up? Well, it defeats the whole purpose of the Heritage Conservation concept, that we want these areas to remain as part of our built heritage. And we all have areas in our community. I think I was telling Counselor Cadri, you know, in Stittsville Main Street, which has that beautiful old buildings on it, you want to maintain and preserve that characteristic. You don't want to have, you know, a gigantic Walmart on the part of the area that you have preserved. And I think we all have areas, maybe not as old, obviously, as Rockliff and some of the newer suburbs, obviously, you don't have homes that are 50 or 75 or 100 years old. But I think it's important that we actually support what we supported, and we not simply go down the path simply because some person wants to demolish a home. You know, the reality is, anyone buying in a neighborhood that has a Heritage Conservation District knows that, or they should know it, or they should have a good real estate agent or a lawyer to tell them, so that they're not surprised and feel hard done by, by the city that doesn't want to bend its rules that we just voted for a scant year ago. So, the motion that is before us is from the Planning Committee, and if you want to demolish the property, you vote yes, and if you do not want to demolish the property, you vote no. So, yays and nays. Madam Deputy Clerk, please.
Counselor Moffett?
Yes.
Counselor Leeper?
No.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Kakish?
No.
Counselor Cloutier?
No.
Counselor Blay?
Oui.
Counselor McKenney?
No.
Counselor DeRouze?
Non.
Counselor Shirelli?
Yes.
Counselor Brockington?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
No.
Counselor Chernysenko?
Non.
Counselor Tierney?
Yes.
Counselor Deans? Counselor Cadri?
No.
Counselor Mydick?
No.
Counselor Hubley?
Yes.
Counselor Fleurie?
No.
Counselor Egli?
Yes.
Counselor Monnet?
Non.
Counselor Newsbaum?
No.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Yes.
Counselor Elshantiiri?
Yes.
Mayor Watson?
No.
10 yays, 13 nays?
Okay, so that motion is defeated. Counselor Newsbaum, I believe, has a replacement motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I have a motion before me, be it resolved that council refuse the application to demolish 270 Buckens Road, a property located in the Rockliff Park Heritage Conservation District, designated under Part 5 of the Ontario Heritage Act, and refuse the application to construct a new building on the property located at 270 Buckens Road, et cetera.
So will we put the same votes, so we don't have to go through yays and nays? Agreed on that? Agreed? Okay, so that carries. Sorry, I apologize. The same votes in reverse? Just so we're clear, Madam Deputy Clerk? Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Our next item that has been held is on page 10, Section 37, Five-Year Review, Revision de l'article 37. Counselor Leeper and Harder have a motion. Counselor Leeper, if you'd like to introduce the motion, and then we'll get to questions and comments.
Thank you, Chair. One of the provisions in the guidelines was that if money is allocated through a Section 37 agreement to one affordable housing project or use, and it was proposed to be moved to another affordable housing use, that that could be accomplished with staff delegated authority. This motion would introduce counselor concurrence into that formula, such that the counselor concurrence would be required in order to switch between affordable housing envelopes within Section 37. My understanding is that this enjoys staff support, whereas Report ACS, et cetera, which recommends council approve the Section 37 guidelines 2017, was approved by Planning Committee on May 9th, and whereas Planning Committee requested that additional wording to Guideline 7.7 Affordable Housing of the Section 37 Guidelines 2017, therefore, be it resolved that Guideline 7.7 Affordable Housing of Document 1 be amended by deleting and replacing the last sentence with "The use of any cash payments towards affordable housing will be determined under the discretion of the General Manager of Community and Social Services in consultation with the Ward Counselor."
Okay, so it's just adding the consultation with the Ward Counselor. Does anyone have any comments on this motion? Counselor Fleur, you're on the main motion, not this one? On the motion, the amendment? The main motion or the amendment? Okay, go ahead.
So, Counselor Leeper, how does OCH fit into this discussion?
I'm not entirely sure, because to date, I don't, haven't seen Section 37 funds used toward OCH. Generally, what we've seen in the wards where there has been money allocated through Section 37 is that it's being held in a fund. That would be, the reason for this motion is to ensure that the counselor has some control over that so that it is ward-specific. Presumably, if a, if there is money in a ward affordable housing fund, and it was determined that one of the best uses of that would be to go into an Ottawa community housing proposal, it would require the ward, the ward counselor's concurrence working with the General Manager of Housing.
Yeah, and I have no, I have no quarrel with the ward counselor's involvement. I think that's, that's quite appropriate. But it just seems to me that we have a very seasoned and knowledgeable stakeholder in the city. I'm just wondering why they're not part of the, part of the discussion.
Counselor?
So, I, I'm looking, Counselor Leeper, is that, is that something that could be considered by way of a friendly amendment to your motion, that they be consulted? It just seems to me they have the expertise to assist in that sort of discussion and make sure the money's spent in the best possible way.
Mr., who is, Mr. Willis?
Mr. Mayor, on behalf of myself and General Manager Jan Sporel, who is not here to help, but her staff are here to assist me on this, generally speaking, Ottawa Community Housing isn't the only potential provider of housing, depending on the geography of where the actual application is and where the funds are available. So, the Counselor Egli's point is well-taken, that they are, Ottawa Community Housing is a good group to consult, and we would do that on a staff level, but in not all circumstances would Ottawa Community Housing be necessarily a participant in the discussion, depending on which ward we're talking about. So my advice is that we take that back under staff direction, rather than through the motion.
To consult as necessary. I'm looking at Counselor Fleur as Chair, and he's, I think he's nodding his head as well. So as long as there's a public commitment to do that and take into account the expertise we have on the ground, as necessary, I'm fine with that. Is that acceptable, Counselor Leeper?
Okay, so Counselor Fleur has a question on the main item before we vote on the motion and amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It won't be long, and thank you for, for my colleague Keith Egli for bringing this up. I certainly am favored to this. My question is, certainly, I, the report is well-written, and it provides better direction in terms of what we had before, but I'd like to hear staff on the issues of drawback. Because what's happened in the past is property would come in, we'd identify the Section 37 fee or amounts, sometimes in the range of 2 million, for example, and I don't want to raise a specific property, and then there's just so many drawbacks that by the end, the actual community benefit portion gets down to 200,000. So, it's not clear to me in this report how that will be corrected. So it's not clear to me in this report how that will be corrected, because the relationship between what is factored as a drawback and the value of the drawback, it remains vague as part of this report.
Mr. Mayor, we're getting our experience with Section 37 in the city, and we're relatively few years into it in comparison to other municipalities. I think that we take that back as a commitment of an issue to continue to monitor and try to provide operational procedures and practices that offer greater clarity, and then when we bring forward reports to committees and council, we'll explain those factors with more additional detail. And if Mr. Smith has any additional comments to add on top of that, I will let him.
Mr. Mayor, I think the key with Section 37, it's a negotiation process, and there's been experience in other jurisdictions, primarily in Toronto, where if you start articulating and defining precisely and preclude the whole notion of negotiation, the whole Section 37 process tends to be looked at as another form of taxation, which is not allowed under the Section 37 provisions of the Planning Act. That's part of the reason why it's structured in a way where, in fact, we do provide for the drawdown, and in fact, is a lot of negotiation. We clarify the types of things that would be eligible considerations for determining a drawdown. We don't indicate that there's a percentage amount that would be associated with compiling of these drawdowns, but there are general parameters. I think to Mr. Willis's point, we understand that there's some concern about how we come up with these determinations, and it's something that clearly we'll have to continue to work through and work with, but the important thing that we can't lose sight of is the concept of negotiation.
Thanks for that. The French in you said drawback, but it is drawdown. I apologize for that. So just to clarify, would it be possible, because there's always a number that's established, that the file lead in the Planning Department identifies that number, and then we sort of, as a councillor's office, only gets to the last number, and we don't see, you know, where it started and which components of community benefits. Can that be a little more tightly managed so that local offices can know of the start point and what is actually considered drawback as part of an application?
Mr. Mayor...
Drawdown.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, what I think is reasonable is when we do our staff reports on Section 37, we can indicate in the staff reports factors that affect the drawdown, and if should councillors have additional information or requests, we can deal with them on a case-by-case basis. It's not advisable to include the numbers, because as Mr. Smith indicated, this is a negotiated arrangement, and it would prejudice negotiations if we were to include specific numbers. But I think it's reasonable for us to indicate the factors considered, and should councillors have questions, we will follow up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Leaper, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the benefit of colleagues, this was a significant line of questioning along what councillor Fleury was asking. Some greater transparency around the value of those drawdowns. I did have a very good conversation with Ms. Nedden and Mr. James, and I am satisfied with their commitment to try to provide significant new transparency in staff reports moving forward with respect to how those drawdowns have influenced the very first number. So we'll look forward to seeing those as we move forward. Thanks, and thank you to your staff for having that conversation, because I am also convinced now by the need not to get too deep into the exact numbers, because we don't want to give bargaining leverage away to the developers. We want that final number to look as high as we can possibly get it. So thank you to your staff.
Okay, so we have councillor Leaper and Harder's motion carried, and the main report is amended, carried. Thank you very much. Motion to adopt reports. Motion pourtant adoption de rapport, conseil Cadre, appuy par conseil Hubley, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. That the reports from the Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation entitled Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation 2016 Annual Report, the report from City Clerk and Solicitor's Office entitled Status Update, Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending May 19, 2017, Community and Protective Services Committee Report 23, Planning Committee Report 43B and 44A, and the report from the City Clerk and Solicitor's Office entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to Bill 73, Explanation Requirements at the City Council Meeting of May 10, 2017, be received and adopted as amended.
On the recommendation, carried. Motion's requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. The first one, councillor El Shantiri, will leave the table. We do, I hate doing that, Eli, because you've worked so hard, as your other colleagues have, but we know, we appreciate you referencing the conflict. So this is on the tax deferral program that I referenced at our last meeting, that the rules of procedure be approved, carried. On the report, councillor Blay, sent by councillor Taylor. Councillor Blay, if you'd like to introduce the motion, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'll go to the operative clauses at the end. Therefore, be resolved that council approve the extension of the due date for payment of 2017 final taxes to December 7, 2017, for those properties identified by the City Treasurer in consultation with the manager, security and emergency management that are damaged by the May flooding event, which has prevented their normal use, which are located in primarily but not limited to West Carlton, Cumberland Bay, Kitchi Sippi, and Orleans Ward, and based on the eligibility criteria set out in Schedule A. And be it further resolved that the City Treasurer be directed to provide impacted residents with information on their tax deferral options as soon as possible following the adoption of this motion. And be it further resolved that the City Treasurer be delegated the authority to extend the option for tax deferral to any impacted property that may have been missed in the initial gathering of information.
Great. On the report, carried. Thank you. Next is a pilot of smoke devices at Fury Games. Councillor Cherneschenko, sent by councillor El Shantiri. On the rules of procedure being waived, carried. Councillor Cherneschenko, please.
I admit, this is a little unusual one. Apparently, it is becoming popular at some soccer games to have smoke generating devices among certain fan groups for atmosphere in stands. OSEC has been receiving requests from their core fan groups, and their sense is better to create a controlled way of putting smoke into the stadium than ad hoc generation of smoke by some supporters. That was currently not allowed under our bylaws, but my understanding is, in conversation with staff, they've come up with a proposal for a five-game pilot, and certainly, my own sense is that should it be unpopular with the other fans who might not want smoke in the stadium, that OSEC would certainly hear from them and would need to figure out what was best for their own fan base. So there's the preamble to, whereas the City of Ottawa prohibits the use of smoke devices in Bylaw Number 2003, 237, whereas OSEC would like to pilot the use of smoke devices for five games a season, whereas Ottawa Fire Services has been consulted on the smoke devices and believes these devices can be used safely, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Ottawa grant an exemption to Bylaw 2003, 237, to Ottawa Sports and Entertainment Group to allow for the use of smoke devices for Fury Games starting May 24 for five games during the 2017 season, and granting OSEC an exemption from Section 17 of the bylaw, which requires a permit application to be made 30 days in advance to the proposed use, subject to OSEC meeting all other permit requirements of the bylaw, including Section 18 to the satisfaction of the fire chief.
All right, does everyone want to speak on this issue? I don't believe the smoke will be going into River Ward, councillor. Does that answer your question? Councillor Brockington?
We certainly hear the noise from Lansdowne, but that's another issue for another day. I'm just concerned about what the actual smoke is. I don't know if the word "smoke" is being used to describe, it's not actual smoke, but can I just get a comment on what the actual gas is and what the potential, if any, impacts are on the health of people who will be sitting near these devices?
Now, this could go way off track if we allow it. Councillor Brockington?
Well, the motion, Mr. Mayor, is smoke devices. I'd like to know what is actually being emitted in the stands beside people. We certainly go great lengths to put restrictions in the city about smoke and other gases around inhabitants, so we're going to let off smoke machines. What is the substance being released?
So Mr. DeMonte, I believe there's reference that they have to be approved by the fire service, so do you have a...
Yeah, the fire chief and the fire service did look at the public safety aspect of it, and the MSDS sheet said there was no health risk. That said, we could follow up with public health, because I don't have a direct answer as to what the product is, but it's the one similarly you'll see at concerts and rock concerts and other types of events, is that type of smoke.
I've seen all types of, from flares in European stands, to actual smoke, to smoke machines, to all other types of substances. So I'd like to have a better understanding of what's actually being released, and whether it's in the stands where people are sitting, or whether it's going to be on the periphery of the stadium, that information's not here. And I think people who are going to go to the games and who may have allergies or other sensitivities should know that before we deal with this type of request. There's really no information about the substance in this motion.
Thank you. Councillor Moffat, please.
So can I just get confirmation that staff, in a timely manner, will be providing the information that I've raised?
Sorry, Mayor, I didn't hear that.
I just want confirmation from staff that I will get responses to my questions in a timely manner.
We can provide that, Mayor.
Thank you.
Councillor Moffat, please.
Thank you. I'm just curious, would hooliganism be a friendly amendment? No? Okay, sorry. I thought we're bringing European soccer to Ottawa, so I thought hooliganism might be an option, but I take it from the, no one laughing, that that's actually not funny.
There must be a writer's strike in your office, councillor. Councillor Cadre, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just, I just wanted to add the confirmation through councillor Brockington's question, that Ottawa Public Health be consulted on this item. Mr. DeMonte?
Yes, Mayor, we can do that, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor El Shantiri?
I don't know if I can answer my colleague Brockington's question and concern, but the devices will not be the shisha, could only allow the legal staff. Our Prime Minister's going to agree to very soon.
I knew you were going to say that. On the motion as presented, carried. Next item requires suspension of the rules is a motion by myself, sent by councillor Egley, with respect to road and pathway repairs on the waiver of the rules, carried. As many members of council know, this issue of the quality of roads after one of the worst winters we had with the freeze-thaw cycles, and the number of potholes that have been filled, and some of them had to be filled on a temporary basis with cold patch, I certainly hear from a lot of residents on a pretty regular basis when I'm out and about in the community, that we need to invest more in our road and pathway system. Particularly, I often see the condition of roads along the shoulders in very rough shape, and that's bad for motorists, it's bad for cyclists at the same time. So working with staff, I was able to secure $2.5 million in funds being returned as part of capital close exercise, as well as funds in the one-time and unforeseen, including $400,000 be added to the unscheduled asphalt road pathway surface repairs program, which is, in essence, fixing the potholes. And I would ask members of council for their support. Obviously, we're not unique in this situation. You go to other cities that have the same temperature and climate. We had something like 70, 7-0, freeze-thaw cycles. And as we all know, from the work that our good folks at Public Works do, trying to keep up with these freeze-thaw cycles, the water freezes, then it thaws, and the pothole is created. So I certainly appreciate the challenge Mr. Wiley and his team have faced. They have filled in, I believe, Mr. Wiley, over 200,000 different potholes, but we also know that we have a significantly long list of streets that need asphalt overlay. And as someone who travels in literally every ward of the city over the course of a week or so, I see firsthand we have some streets that are in great shape, we have some streets that are in, you know, adequate shape, and we have some streets that are in very poor shape that need that asphalt overlay for both pedestrians in some instances, where there are no sidewalks, cyclists that use the sides or the main road, and motorists. So I would ask members of council for their support. This allows us to do a little bit more than we were going to do, and the reason I've asked for the rules to be suspended now is because, as you know, we have such a relatively short construction season, we want to be able to get out and fix as many roads and as many potholes as we can while the good weather is with us. So councillor DeRouze, on questions and comments, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To you, I have a question, or maybe I just want to bring a comment on the patches and the potholes. I did speak with Kevin not too long ago, but I know we used to use hot patches in the winter, and we stopped, and now we're using the cold patches, and it's not really working out. Maybe in your experience, maybe we should look back to reinstate or reusing the hot patches, because is the reason why they're not working, because we're not applying them right, or there is maybe more training need to be doing? Because I know the cold patches are working, but with the weather we're having, you put the cold patches, and then our snowplow hit them, and they'll go away, and they're not really catching up to the road properly. Is it something, maybe you look at it and come back maybe to the Transportation Committee when you bring your report next time for the Transportation Committee on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we are continually looking at new products to do a better, more permanent fix. In fact, we're evaluating a different type of cold patch that is supposed to perform what better in wet and cold weather, and I can certainly come back to Transportation Committee with the results of that test.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Councillor Brockington?
Thank you, Your Worship. I have been working with the mayor's office the last two weeks on a public inquiry, which I'll be moving at the end of our meeting about this subject matter, but certainly, I support additional resources being put into this. The condition of roads in my ward and across the city are in a very poor condition, and this is part of my public inquiry, but I'm going to ask this now. I don't believe that the freeze-thaw cycle is the only contributing factor to the quality of our roads, and I'd like to know, through either the solicitor or the GM of Public Works, what type of performance audits are being done on roads where the condition has deteriorated at a much faster rate than what is normally acceptable. I can think of a couple roads in my area where staff do believe the quality of the asphalt is at play, but I certainly support the motion, but what type of, like I said, auditing are we doing on the quality of the jobs that are being performed?
So, Mr. Mayor, first of all, on the question of the quality of the asphalt being installed, we actually have an active quality assurance program during the construction of new road projects. When new roads are actually built, we have new specifications, and we do take samples, and those are tested, and as well as onsite construction supervision. Many of the issues we're seeing are on roads that are older, may predate the current construction standards, the roads may have changed over time to have higher or heavier traffic levels, or which drainage conditions may have changed over time, or it may simply be due to the age of the road infrastructure as well. So where we are in situations where we're repairing a road rather than reconstructing it, we are dealing with an underlying base that may not be as strong a condition as a new road being constructed. So we will be bringing a report to committee and council on the comprehensive asset management plan. We'll present more information on road construction at that time, and we welcome more questions to staff at the time, and we have the experts in the room.
Great. So you'll have that inquiry as well, councillor, at the end. Thank you. Councillor Leaper, on the motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question in terms of the difference that this will make. It looks to be relatively significant. My understanding is that the road resurfacing budget in 2017, the capital is $33.6 million. Adding an additional 2.5 means you're getting about 7.5% more capital money into this. about 7.5% more capital money into this. Is that roughly the...
That's correct.
And then on the operating side, how much is that, 400 as a percentage of the budget?
It's in the neighborhood of about 15%.
Okay. So again, fairly significant. Is it enough? What kind of a difference are Ottawa residents going to see as a result of injecting these funds into those two accounts?
Mr. Mayor, for the potholes, we're going to concentrate on those areas, and all councillors would have seen them. Where there's clusters of potholes, and they're chronic areas where we're continually going back, we're going to hire some contractors to actually go in and grind out those entire areas, and then roll it with hot asphalt. And I think that'll be a much more permanent fix. And it'll also stop crews from having to continuously go back and repair those areas.
Wonderful. And do you need more than that? So if we're taking a look at the budget in 2018, what sort of implications can we draw from this additional funds?
Mr. Mayor, I think it was, as you pointed out, a particularly bad year. I don't know if it's indicative of years going forward. This will certainly help us to get ahead of it for this year.
Okay. So you're satisfied that it's probably one-time funding as opposed to an ongoing capital and operation requirement?
Mr. Mayor, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Shirelli, please.
It's okay.
Sorry, councillor Egli, then councillor Shirelli. Get the mics.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo what you had to say. It has been a memorable year, and not in a good way. And one statistic that I think we should all be aware of, because there are a lot of concerns and complaints out there about what's the city doing. And I can tell you, as of yesterday, and I checked with Mr. Wiley, as of yesterday, city crews have filled 148,000 potholes this season. So the crews are out there, they're doing what they can with what they have. So I think that this will be a very welcome addition to their toolbox. And the approach that Mr. Wiley has set out to target those areas where the clusters are, where we're getting the repeated complaints, this money is going to allow them to tackle those in a very real way. And again, I just want to take this opportunity to thank staff for being out there in all kinds of weather, and dealing with the potholes under very adverse conditions, whether it's rain, or cold, or damp. And I also want to take this opportunity to remind the public that one of the ways that we know about these potholes is that you tell us. So it's not a bother when you get a hold of your councillor and say there's a pothole, or you call 311 and say there's a pothole. It's actually helpful. It's something that we encourage. And you're our eyes on the road, so to speak. The public are eyes on the road. And when they see potholes, we need to know about that. We want to hear about that, so that Kevin can send his crews out to address the most significant situations in the city. So again, I would urge everybody to support this motion. I think it will go a long way towards dealing with a very, as I say, memorable year, but not a memorable year in a good way.
Great. Thank you, councillor. On the motion, carried, adoptée. Thank you very much. The next motion that requires suspension of the rules of procedure is by councillor Hublly, and seconded by councillor Tierney, with respect to the rodent population. On suspension, carried. Councillor Hublly, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just go right to the, therefore be it resolved, because I think everybody's seen the result of the inquiry that councillor Fleury and I requested. So therefore be it resolved that staff be directed to report back to the appropriate standing committee on the establishment of a proactive monitoring and baiting program as part of the longer-term comprehensive strategy for determining baseline rodent population and potential funding sources for such a program in advance of the development of the 2018 budget. Basically, Mr. Mayor, what we're looking for is currently, what city staff do is they only bait the sewers when someone, resident complains. And what this motion will do is encourage staff to proactively bait the sewers around the city so that we can manage the rodent population better. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Carried? Carried. Merci. Notice the motion for consideration at subsequent meetings. Avise d'intention, notice of intent from the Ottawa Community Housing Corporation to hold the annual general meeting of the shareholder at the council meeting scheduled for June 14, 2017. Motion to introduce bylaws, motion pourtant présentation de règlement. Councillor Cadri, please, seconded by councillor Hublly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
Carried. Confirmation bylaw, please. Règlement de ratification. Councillor Cadri.
Again, move by myself and seconded by councillor Hublly, that the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings at council meeting of May 24, 2017.
Carried. Inquiries. Councillor Brockington referenced his inquiry with respect to potholes. Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. It's a two-parter. First, given that the quantity and severity of potholes and overall road conditions exist in many parts of River Ward and across the city, what is the city of Ottawa doing to research and utilize new technologies and innovative road paving techniques to maximize the quality and longevity of our roads? And my second question, which I've asked earlier, but I do want to put this on the record with a written reply, has the city conducted performance audits of roads where the condition deteriorated at a much faster rate than expected, such as, but not limited to, the airport parkway and the on-off ramps of the parkway at Hunt Club Road? Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you. Our next written inquiry that I have is from councillor Chernyschenko.
Thank you. Because there's a bit of background, it's quite a lengthy one, but I won't read it all. It's essentially referring to the fact that in, I don't want to say the word demolition again in this meeting, but in the demolition of homes, there is frequently a lot of dust and unknown potentially hazardous material. And it's become, become more and more to my attention, there is a gap in that the Ministry of Labor provincially has legislation that is intended to protect workers on the site, but there seems to be a gap around notification and protection of neighbors at a time of demolition. So my inquiry, I'll skip to the end. Can the city clerk and solicitor provide counsel with legally enforceable options to ensure that builders follow appropriate abatement measures prior to demolition? Or may a supplementary bylaw be added under the Building Code Act requiring that proof of harmful substance abatement, including documentation from the Ministry of Labor, be provided prior to the issuance of a demolition permit? Are there any other Ontario municipalities which have successfully implemented such regulations? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So that will be answered by staff. Final written inquiry is from councillor McKennie, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this one is directed at Chief Demonte with Emergency and Protective Services. Construction projects can often generate considerable noise that may disturb residents, particularly on weekends when they expect there to be less noise for a restful time. While the city has measures in place to help ensure accountability on its projects, on its own projects, can staff please advise what measures are currently in place to mitigate private construction noise, and review what opportunities could be developed to further reduce noise disruption by private developers in the vicinity of residential properties?
Thank you. Before, German, I'll ask councillor Cadri. As we all know, the Senators have been in quite a remarkable playoff series with the Penguins. And last night, obviously, was a must-win, they did. And councillor Cadri has the honor of hosting the CTC in his ward. So a few comments, councillor, on wishing our Sens the very best.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And as you pointed out, the Senators have enjoyed some very good success so far this year. And let's hope and send them all our best as council and as a city to make sure they bring the finals back to the city of Ottawa. And we're all in supporting them. Go Sens, go.
And we're not going to allow councillor Shirelli to talk about any parade or anything like that. One game at a time, one game at a time. And we wish the Senators the very best. They brought a lot of excitement and pride to our city. And we, we know it's been a tough series, but boy, have they been playing well in the last month or so. Councillor Kakish.
I was just going to say I'm thankful that councillor Shirelli stayed quiet this time, because we don't want the Shirelli jinx, so.
On the adjournment, councillor Cadri, please, seconded by councillor Hublly.
Thank you once again, Mr. Mayor. That the proceedings of city council meeting on May 24, 2017 be adjourned.
On the motion, carried, adoptée. Merci.